Now you're live.
Good morning. Want to welcome everybody. We're going to call to order this special call meeting of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners. As always, the first item on the agenda is the invocation and pledge for this meeting. It will be delivered by District Four Commissioners Greg Lawrence and Pete Streser. Please rise.
Let us pray. God, we come before you this morning acknowledging you as the Creator and Source of all of our blessings. And we pray your blessings this morning on our meetings. The citizens of this county have elected us and given us the great responsibility of being stewards of the public trust. And we pray this morning, as we discuss the county budget, that you would give us wisdom to be good stewards. And as we pray, as we talk about each department, I want to pray over all of our department heads, I want to pray for Rogers Anderson, the county mayor who oversees all of our departments. I want to pray that you would give him strength and wisdom to carry out his duties. For Jason Golden, who oversees the schools and all the teachers and administrators and SRO officers and school bus drivers who daily administrate our school system and oversee the education of our most precious asset, we pray for great wisdom and insight for them. We want to pray for Sheriff Hughes and the brave men and women of the Williamson County Sheriff's Office. Just yesterday, we were reminded of how difficult and dangerous their jobs can be at times. And we are greatly, are deeply grateful, Father, that your hand of protection was on Officer Ball yesterday, and that incident ended with no loss of life or injury. We're sorry to hear that retired Representative Cole has passed away, and we do pray for his family, for peace and comfort at this time as they grieve his loss. We want to also pray for Connor Scott, who oversees our emergency services. We pray for your protection on all of our firefighters and first responders in this county. We're sorry also to hear that the Franklin firefighter engineer passed away yesterday, and we pray your comfort and peace on his family as well. We want to pray for Catherine Montgomery, who oversees the Health Department and provides medical services for our citizens, and Andrea Johnson, who provides care for our animals, and Mike Madison, our Director of Planning, Gordon Hampton, our Director of Parks, Gina Combs, who oversees our HR department, Eddie Hood, who oversees all of our Highway Department. For Jeff Whitby, our County Court Clerk, Sherri Anderson, our County Recorder, Mac Nolan, who oversees our Solid Waste Department. For Karen Paris, our trustee, for Brad Coleman, our Appraiser, and for Chad Gray, who has the very, very important job of overseeing all the elections in this county. I pray that you would give us boldness and visionary leadership, all of us, and wisdom so that we can leave a great legacy for the next generation. It is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda is the roll call. If you haven't done so already, please sign in using your pads and then hit your present button. Got everybody up there? Is David Presty is? Yeah. Record the roll, please, Mr. Whitby. We're going to wait on Clifford here. Commissioner Clifford, if you can go ahead and hit your present button real quick.
Okay. Twenty-three present.
Thank you, Mr. Whitby. Next, we have Citizens Communications. We allow up to three minutes per individual speaker. And for this meeting, we've had one individual sign up to speak. I'll call your name, and when you come to the podium, please announce your name and the town or city in which you live. I have signed in here Mr. Steve Hickey.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Steve Hickey, Franklin, representing the Williamson County Republican Party. I'd like to read you a comment that was sent to me by a party member upon learning about this line item request that we're going to talk about here in a minute. She said, "There is never too much transparency in government. Indeed, a $4 million line item such as this should receive considerable discussion and debate prior to consideration by the entire commission. Failure to do so is not transparent government." The Williamson County Republican Party thanks commissioners such as Ms. Hayes, who asks questions that lead to greater visibility on government actions, and implores the commission to make sure special meetings such as this do not have to happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes Citizen Communications. Next, we move on to Communications and Messages. Want to thank Commissioner Jones for the donuts. Those are Fairview Donuts, right?
That's right.
That's right. Some of the best donuts in the county. Also, Commissioner Tonacliff and Commissioner Morton both brought sausage biscuits. So I want to thank both of them for those treats. And with that, we will move on to our first and only resolution for this meeting, the special call meeting. That is Resolution 625-1, Resolution approving the terms of the contract with Cigna Healthcare for stop-loss insurance and authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute the contract. I have a proper motion made by Commissioner Megan Guffey and seconded by Commissioner Steve Smith. This was seen by purchasing an insurance committee, and they voted five in favor, zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I may defer to some members of the staff and Chair Mason if we get into that. I do want to make sure that everyone knows that this is a normal process. The insurance stop-loss is something we have every year because we are self-insured. And do want to note that the entire insurance process followed the rules of the state purchasing guidelines. Mrs. Mitchell is here. If anyone has any questions about those guidelines. Bids are posted and sent to numerous entities. They have expressed an interest. They are also posted on what in construction business I would call Dodge Report, but other people look at that. It's also on our website, so anyone that wanted to bid could do so. And in our main insurance, we received multiple bids, but after the PNI chose Cigna, we only received one bid on the stop-loss. But we've discussed this at our purchasing insurance meeting going back for many months. And so I want to note that we have discussed this. We have had Commissioners present at our PNI meetings, numerous questions. And so I present this for you so that we can vote on this and provide insurance for all of our county employees, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Do I have any questions or comments? Looks like my first one is from Commissioner Greg Lawrence.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the committee, the PNI Committee, for their work on this stop-loss. And we are at a point where we have to make a decision today, and that's not necessarily the position we always want to be in. And I think there's probably reasons for that. I mean, this process does take a lot of time, especially for the non-incumbent carriers. And it could just be that some carriers looked at our situation, the fact that we're with Cigna, they looked at our claims and other issues, and decided we just, you know, weren't the girl they wanted to take to the prom, and said, "We're, you know, going to decline to quote on you." But others, for others, I think we may need to look at our process because they may not have had enough time. The non-incumbent carriers don't have as much information as incumbent carriers in these situations, and it does take them more time to give us quotes. And a lot of times, those quotes are, come with caveats and contingencies for more information. So some of them may have just declined to say, "We don't have enough time." So, you know, I do think we need to look at our process. The fact that we're hiring a, or we're looking at hiring a consultant, I think, is a step in the right direction. I think that will help us a lot. And there's opportunities that we do have. We're going to vote on the budget later today. The insurance as a whole is a big number. Last year, we spent $100 million on our insurance, including medical and dental, and that's 10% of our budget. So it is a number that is also significantly higher than some of our peer counties around us. In 2023, we spent $20 million more than Montgomery County, who has the same number of employees we do. In 2023, we spent $15 million more than Rutherford County, who has more employees than we do. So I believe that there are some ideas that are being utilized in the employee benefit world by self-funded plans all over the country that we could implement as well. And we actually looked at some of them. I'm disappointed. I don't think we did as deep a dive as I would like for us to see on some of them, and we could have possibly implemented some in July. But we've got, we've got time if we move quickly, and that's going to be key. We're going to have to move very quickly to have the possibility to implement some of these ideas in January. And I believe that there's, it's very likely that we could save 10% to 20% on our employee benefits without reducing the benefits for the employees. In fact, we could possibly improve the benefits in the process. So I plan to support this resolution today because we are, we are in the ninth hour, and we need, we need to make sure we have the stop-loss in place for, you know, to protect our citizens from the risk that, you know, they would be on the hook for if we don't have this insurance in place. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next question or comment comes from Commissioner Hayes.
Hi. Good morning, everyone. Do appreciate the committee's efforts on this. I don't think there's any disagreement in the room that we need a stop-loss. I mean, that's just smart business. The questions and the issues come in, in how we, how the stop-loss was represented within another RFP. When you name an RFP for medical and prescription, stop-loss, there are a lot, this is a very competitive area, and there are other companies outside of major medical providers that will bid on it and give us a much better rate. So this was hidden. If you look within that RFP, it was number 15. It was hidden within that document. That's putting us in a huge disadvantage, number one. No wonder there's only one person that bid. So again, major problems in the process. I will be looking into this and spending a lot of quality time on it in the next few months and trying to come up with a very transparent process that not only better represents Williamson County, but also allows us to get more bids that are more competitive and that will still represent us at a, and meeting our needs for stop-loss, but also protecting us as we, we should be as a county. But there are a lot of concerns. We delayed today because we felt there was a lot more to look at on an individual basis. I have a very good friend that's a broker, and there's just a lot of holes in this process. I am happy we're getting a broker, which is otherwise, I guess, being represented as a benefits consultant. I would like to look at that process as well. There should be a very distinct process that has a unbiased metric to it. So we get a really great benefits consultant slash broker that will look at us and our county and our needs and be critical in how we spend our dollars and help us represent ourselves to get the best value and the best plans, because we can do so much better, I think, for our employees. And that's, that's all I have to say today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richards.
Hi. Good morning, everybody. Hopefully you read my email about the reason why I objected to hearing this late filed resolution. My most important concern was the fact that as far as I, and please correct me if I'm wrong, this was not reviewed by our Budget Committee, which our own rules require all resolutions involving the expenditure of money shall first be referred to the Budget Committee before being submitted to the Board, except as otherwise provided herein. Looking at other opportunities to bypass that, that rule would be in the case of an emergency, which maybe this reaches that level. However, that should be noted in the resolution itself that we're bypassing our own rules. We had, as the Commissioner mentioned, the lack of competitive bidding, which is, which is illustrated by the fact that we had not a single company, and I did a lot of deep diving on this and educated myself on this. I did have a background. I used to work at Aetna in employee benefits. And I am familiar with the stop-loss product, but there are a bunch of vendors that provide just stop-loss coverage. Not a single one of them, national carriers, bidded on this RFP because the title of the RFP didn't have stop-loss in the title, and it was buried in there. The state law requires that adequate public notice be given. I don't think that's adequate public notice if the stop-loss carriers don't even know that they can bid on this product. We don't know what they've, well, I guess there was no evaluation process because, which is required by state law, because we only had one vendor. This particular resolution had no contract attached to the resolution despite saying in the wording that it's, a contract is being presented for approval. In the resolution itself, it has no price or the funding source of the resolution. And I did some research. This is the first time we have, in five years, that we have had to approve a stop-loss resolution. I don't know what happened, Mr. Mayor. Something happened that we have to approve this stop-loss resolution because we haven't done it in five years. Maybe we approved it as part of the medical. We shouldn't have. It's clearly a different item that we should be approving separately.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. These patterns of procedural breakdown expose us to audit risks. The companies that were denied the opportunity to bid on this can sue the county, like, because we haven't followed the proper bid procedures. That's all. I'm done.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next question or comment comes from Commissioner Hester.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have what I think is probably a very simple question, but the laser applies question on the column to the far left, and there's a laser pooling level. Could I get an explanation, please?
Who would be calling for that? Would that come from Leslie or from Tina or Gina?
That will probably come from Gina.
Okay. Is Gina here? Would she be able to speak on that?
And I apologize. We're talking about the document that I sent out.
Yes.
That included a laser. So what that's indicating is we do have a potential claim that our reinsurance will not cover. So any kind of lasering means they will not cover the $400,000, which is our lasering number, anything over $400,000.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hester. Next, I have Commissioner Sturgeon.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm just, one question I don't understand is why is the stop-loss contract alternating and not in sync with our medical insurance contracts? I mean, how did that develop? If it, I mean, just a why?
The stop-loss is on your fiscal year, July 1 to July 1. The medical benefits runs with the calendar year so that they can be calculated within that 12 months. It's not, that's just the way it's always been done. That's the way it's rolled forward. I can't speak to if you could do the benefits on the calendar year. Stop-loss is budgeted for the entire fiscal year of the county.
Wouldn't it make sense to make them insane?
My job's not to make sense. Clearly.
No comment.
Any further comments or follow-up? Okay. Next, I have Commissioner Mary Smith.
Yes, thank you. First off, I just want to say thank you to everyone who worked on these quotes and putting this information together. And particularly, I want to thank Commissioner Lawrence for the work that he's been doing on the insurance side, and also to Commissioner Richards and Commissioner Hayes for bringing some of these other issues to light. I'm in full support of full transparency in doing these RFPs, especially when it's these high-dollar figures and these high-dollar quotes that we're looking at. I think it's important to give that level of transparency, not only to the Commissioners, but to our taxpayers, who have brought up several different questions to me. I never, never really understood what the stop-loss was, but within the last month, I've learned a lot. And I've also had folks ask me a lot of questions. And so I'm hoping if we can get started on this process early this time around, that we can actually do our due diligence and get answers to those questions that have been presented. So I just want to say thank you, but I do think we have a lot of improvement to do. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Streser.
Yeah, I thought a lot about, you know, why we're here for the special meeting today, you know, kind of the undercurrent with it. And I think it's just concerns over how this process has been handled. Are we doing the best that we can for county employees and for this process? This was my first time on this committee, and as we went through the recommendations of the RFP process, I just wasn't at all confident in the results. And it just became very clear that we can really benefit from an independent broker that really understands the intricacies of this. I mean, if you look at this, you're looking at 10% of the budget. You're looking at 10% of the budget that a very small committee makes a decision on. And it's the second most important benefit for our employees. It's incredibly important, and we really need the expertise of someone. And we also need the independence, someone who's completely independent from the Commission, from the Mayor's office, that can come in and really look at this. We look at other counties. They're paying a lot less. We don't know why. I think a broker could really help us bridge that gap. Is why, I think on the first vote, it actually failed, the original recommendation for Cigna as our primary insurance carrier, failed by a vote of two to two. It was a subsequent meeting that it actually passed. I voted against it twice for the reasons I just don't think that the data coming out of it is something that we can do something with. So as we move on to the stop-loss, we're obviously up against the clock on this thing. I think we're probably going to have to do this. I'm going to vote for it. I don't think we have a choice. But I do think this process has really shown us that we have a very broken process, one that can be greatly improved. I think the silver lining out of all of this is we will improve this process. It looks like we'll have an independent broker. It looks like we could probably even save some money on the contract negotiations. So there's still some, some cost savings that can probably be realized there. But I just think it's very important that moving forward for the folks on the next PNI Committee, that they follow through on making sure that we have an independent broker that can give us the best data possible to give us the best benefits at the best cost. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Petty.
Yeah, I agree with most of what's been said. And again, I appreciate all the work people have done. My concern is, I just don't think we have, we've got enough bids. And, you know, we've gone from $40.35 per employee back in 2017. Now we're looking at $61.85. And back then, we had a $300,000 deductible. Now we're at four. And one of the things I don't understand is when we got this, these options just recently, we got a six-month option, and we got a 12-month option, but the six-month option was a $200,000 deductible, and the cost was insanely high. And I don't know why we couldn't have gotten a $400,000 deductible at half the price of the $4 million to take us to January 1st, to give us time to start working on some additional plans. And I don't understand why that, why our options were so restricted there. So, and by the way, over the last two years, we have paid out to Cigna, based on the information I have here, $7,552,000, and they've paid out about $2 million. So it kind of begs the question, do we even need stop-loss? I know we do, but, you know, you kind of wonder, huh. The last couple of years, we'd be, we'd be making money if we didn't have a stop-loss. So anyway, I'm not suggesting we don't, but I'm just throwing out some numbers here. If we can find some more places that we could get some bids from, maybe we'd get a better deal than what we have.
Commissioner Sanford.
Maybe somebody from the PNI Committee can, can answer this for me. Why was this resolution late filed? It's my understanding that the PNI Committee needed more information because they didn't have all the information when this resolution was presented. But I guess somebody, why was this resolution late filed? To begin with, whoever can answer that?
Let me take a stab at that. And Commissioner Mason may have to fill in some gaps for me here. This was included in the overall bid for employee benefits. The purchasing and insurance, when they approved that, and that would have come forward and included this, but for the decision to hire a broker on the employee, on the insurance side, the health insurance side. That precluded the health insurance from coming to the, to the Board at this time. And we've got more time because it doesn't roll on until January 1. In doing so, though, it did not provide for the stop-loss. So the stop-loss had to be carved out. The decision by PNI was after the filing deadline for the June 9th meeting. So we had to try to do a late file. We received two objections, which is why we ended up with the special call. So the fact that it had to be segregated or separated from the overall insurance plan is what caused the separate resolution. If you go back and look, we've never had a separate stop-loss resolution. It's always been included in the employee benefits plan document. That's why we've got a separate document. That's why we've got a special meeting. Dr., Commissioner Mason, did I miss anything?
That's a pretty, pretty fair assessment. I wouldn't disagree with, with what you said.
And you're, and you're next to speak. So if you wish to continue, I'll call on you now, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you.
I have one other question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Sanders.
And I could be totally wrong. I'm lost my memory. It's not that great right now. But initially in our last commission packet, it said that the contract was attached. Is this, that's the same resolution as this? And it wasn't attached? Is that correct?
The word attached is taken out. You have the material terms because we don't have a certificate or a plan document.
But we have the material terms of the contract for your approval.
Okay. So in that last commission packet, it was just miswording, I guess?
We used a resolution from the prior time and didn't, didn't get it excised correctly.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you. I was the chair of Purchase and Insurance Committee, and I will tell you, it was a challenge mainly for me personally, because purchasing and insurance is not really in my wheelhouse. I'll be the first to admit that. I am very familiar with law enforcement. Purchasing and insurance is something I had to learn. I was reminded the other day by another Commissioner that also chaired the tax study committee when we had quite the to-do with the downtown property. So I don't know whose bad list I am on to keep getting appointed to these committees. But with that all being said, I do want to thank everybody that was involved. This committee met multiple times. These committees are public, as stated earlier. Several Commissioners attended frequently that weren't even on the committee, and I appreciate you all doing so. I appreciate your comments, bringing things to light that I had never thought of before. Again, insurance is not in my wheelhouse. We had a lot of robust discussion in committee, and I think that's very important for people to understand. This didn't happen in a vacuum. It didn't happen in a sealed room. This was a public committee with a lot of robust. In fact, the first time we met, the resolution for medical did fail because there were questions and concerns, as Commissioner Streser pointed out. And so we reconvene, came back, had a lot more conversations. And that's when we, as a committee, elected to do the broker, because we believe as a county, as we are growing, there is opportunity potentially for savings, and we want to take advantage of that. But by appointing the broker, we had to then come back and carve out the stop-loss because of the process. And that's why we're here today. It is necessary. You may not like how we got here or why we're here, but we are here, and we have to have stop-loss. However, again, that is why the committee elected to do the broker, to also look at stop-loss going forward, to look at, do we move it to be on the calendar year versus the budget year? Do we get in sync? So I do believe we're moving in the right direction. Unfortunately, timing-wise, we are here with this issue before us, but I have heard everybody's concerns. concerns, everybody's thoughts. And again, and I think that's why that accumulated in us hiring a broker. And I know Gina and her department have worked really tirelessly. Every question that's been asked, document that's been asked for, I know Gina and her department have responded. And so again, I really appreciate everybody. This was a challenge for me, and I appreciate, appreciate everybody's help and support and just asking the questions. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sturgeon.
Thank you, Chairman. I want to, two things. One, the, address the issue about it not being heard by the Budget Committee. If it was, if it wasn't, if it wasn't, is that okay? And two, this affects a lot of school employees, and in my opinion, we should have some representation on the Purchasing and Insurance Committee from the school board. Is that something we can work towards, Jeff?
The first question is, the amount is included in the amount that was in the budget that came through. So while this individual resolution did not go to budget, the amount that is being paid out is included in the budget under, and I don't remember the line number, so.
So that would apply to every resolution.
Well, those things that have been approved, yes. I mean, obviously, but the amount, the fiscal impact of it is in the budget. Is it required to? The statute does not require it. Your rules do have provisions for the budget to consider things that have fiscal impact, whether that's included by going through the budget and saying that's where we're paying it, or whether you need an individual resolution. I leave to the commission. As to the, I'm going to have to ask you to refresh my memory on, oh, the school board representation. I'd have to look at that. I don't know that, that there is an allowance to have a voting member of the committee, but we could look at that. At a minimum, you could have an ex officio member who could participate with voice and not vote if the statute does not allow a vote, because this is a statutory committee. This isn't a county commission rules committee.
Right. Thank you.
We have commissioners wishing to speak that have not already spoken, so Commissioner Hayes, I will come back to you, but next on the board is going to be Commissioner Smith.
Call the question.
We have a motion to call the question. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Do this by voice or?
It's two-thirds vote, so you can do it by voice if you think you can.
We'll start with a voice vote. If you're in favor of calling the question, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Ask for a show of hands.
Can I have a show of hands of those who voted no?
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Mr. Whitby, when you have it, if you'll give us the count.
Two-thirds be 16. So the motion would fail with 10 noes.
I see 12 yes, 11 no.
Fails. The motion called question fails.
The motion fails. So my next question or comment on the board, again, going to those who haven't spoken yet first, would be Commissioner Torres.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a quick question on the follow-up to Commissioner Hester's question on the laser. Am I reading the table at the bottom right that there's 24 members that are being excluded from the stop-loss for a cost of $3.3 million?
Twenty-four, man, twenty-four, sixty-four, year old man.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. All right. So, but is the $3.3 million what the impact is to the county?
Gina, if you can come to the podium and...
So this is really a $7.6 million vote today?
No.
Right? Because we're still, has that 3.3 been allocated, appropriated?
Thank you, Commissioner Torres, for your question. Hopefully, I can help in that area. This has not been approved yet, so this is a possibility. This is a procedure. This is a very delicate procedure that has been brought to light for this individual. We do not yet know if he, this person even qualifies yet for this procedure. There's a lot of steps, obviously medically, that I will not even attempt to, to allude that I have any idea what's going on in that area. However, if this procedure is approved and this individual decides to move forward with this procedure, then the county would be on, be responsible if and when we had to incur that cost.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Hayes.
I withdraw my question.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, if we're ready to vote. If you're in favor of Resolution 625-1, signify by pressing your yes button. If you're opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Three yes, three no.
Resolution passes. If there are no other items to come before the commission?
We can't have any other items.
Can't have, okay, we can't have any other items, I'm told. If there are no other announcements, then we'll call for an adjournment. We will meet back here at 9:00 AM for the budget meeting.